Okay, I'm waiting for Eve. Alright, that's fine. Okay, everyone. You'd like to start the meeting now? Do a call to order? Clerk, can you please have a roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Ryan.
President.
Vice Mayor Llewellyn.
Hold on. Hold on, one second. Okay, go ahead.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Salvino. City Manager Garcia.
Here.
City Attorney Bootsis.
City Attorney's outside. Assistant City Attorney Gurney's here for the moment.
Ralph, can I have you up here for a second? Okay, perfect. Okay, sorry about that, technical difficulties. I'd like to, uh, please have a moment of silence. If everybody could bow their head, please. Thank you. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have presentations and special event approvals, beginning with the Public Art Advisory Board.
Good evening. We should have a PowerPoint available as well. Perfect. It's always good when tech works. My name is Linda Flynn. Um, I'm with the Cultural Planning Group and also the Public Art Consultant for the city of Dana Beach. So Mayor and Commissioners, thank you very much for this opportunity to induce myself and our Public Art Advisory Board um, to give you a brief overview of our work to date and what's next. So our firm, CPG, was engaged by the city to assist in the management of the public art program and the implementation of the adopted public art plan. We are nationally recognized firms specializing in cultural arts planning, public art planning, program management, and cultural and creative district planning. So I'd first like to thank Commissioner Joyce Davis for her service in acting as a liaison for the Public Art Advisory Board. Her insight and guidance is extremely appreciated and valuable as we move forward with the board's work in creating a stellar public art program for the city. So I would first like to introduce the board members. So we will start with Kelly Sharabi, who is our Chair and a design professional. Vice Chair Lily Skipper is in the back, yes. Joanna Grenett. Kyla Holmes, I saw. She is our student volunteer. Lloyd Goradeski, professional public artist. Uh, Mark Aptikin, who everyone knows as a curator, creative, um, agency owner. I thought he was here, but we're not seeing him. And then Megan Kent, who is curator of exhibitions, um, with the city of Hollywood and also a for- former Broward County Public Art Committee. So as you can see, we have comprised our board with, um, professionals that are not just artists, but that represent a wide range of professional skills and knowledge when it comes to public art. So this is just a quick overview of the city public art plan goals from the adopted public art plan. I'm not going to read them all, but you know, we really want to represent the diversity and culture of the city of Dana Beach. Use public art many times it's used as a vehicle for equity and inclusion, contributing to the economic success for a community, add- adding cultural value and visual value, um, serving as a platform for innovation as we move forward with developing the full public art program and of course enhancing the environment for residents and for visitors both. So I put a couple of images of kind of different public art that represents temporary pieces and other pieces. Uh, this is one called "Disappearing Rooms" by Jetty Hine. This is a piece that's actually commissioned by Parks and Recreation Departments across the US. It's a temporary installation, um, that will last for three months, six months, or however long a commission lasts. So it's very, very popular in parks across the US and across the globe. So a quick program status update. If any of you have been to St. Petersburg, you might recognize this piece. This is "Bending Ark" by Janet Eckelman. She's a nationally renowned public artist that is from the city of Tampa. She got her inspiration when she lived in Portugal and watched the fishermen pull the nets out of the ocean. She is from Tampa and the city of St. Pete and the surrounding area raised 2.5 million dollars to put this piece up on the St. Pete Pier. And if you travel a lot to metropolitan cities, you'll see Janet's work everywhere. It's really quite amazing to see the movement and the light during- during the day and the evening. So what have we accomplished to date? You know, public art programs can take some time, especially when we're starting out. So as I said, we formed and onboarded a very qualified public art advisory board. Um, we have developed and adopted mural ordinances and a mural program, and we are getting applications in now, some after the fact that we'll be reviewing. I believe on your agenda tonight, you have updates to the public art ordinance, which specifically talks about murals and other art that is in public view via a public right of way. So the public art board will review and the commission will approve any art that is in public view via a public, um, right of way. We have accessioned the first installation, um, into the city collection, Lord Goradeski's piece that was approved, um, at the last meeting. And we've done numerous public art visioning sessions with the Public Art Advisory Board. Um, this is an artist, Jim Denovan, who obviously does temporary art on sand. So he comes in and does community pieces, um, with communities that wash away. So regarding art and private development, uh, the Public Art Advisory Board has reviewed a concept for Seaview. Um, it's Wyland Galleries, if you're familiar with the artist Wyland. Um, he has, uh, he's nationally renowned as well with Studio on Laguna Beach and here. Um, so it's about a 1.25 million piece that will be expected to be installed probably the end of this year. So we will see the concepts and you will approve the final piece, um, as we go through the year. We also, uh, met with Dana Beach Apartments. They are in the process of doing a concept with a renowned Miami artist from Wynwood, Alberto Cavallari. And we will be seeing those concepts in the next couple of months as well. And we're also developing a toolkit for developers so they understand that there's so many possibilities to incorporate art into the development that might be sculpture, but might be also integrated into the design of the building or apartment. So what's next? We talked about how partnerships and collaborations are important. We're moving forward with a partnership with Broward County Cultural Affairs on a public art project. They will be funding the project and handling all of the project management. Um, the selected artist is Xavier Cortado. You're seeing his piece here. He's a community socially engaged artist that works in a lot of coastal towns, environmental stewardship, education through his public art. So we think he'll be a really great fit. Um, and they are providing most of the funding. We may augment it once we get to, um, the time. Because artists are also dealing with inflation issues when it comes to their art materials. We're in the process of reviewing a project with an international artist, Stefan Bolengaro, who wants to donate a piece, um, to the city of Dana Beach. So we're going through the details there. Um, he's in France, so we're, we'll be bringing that to you in the next couple of months. And we- we started a conversation last night at our meeting about visioning for the city's anniversary. So really, um, having something that represents, uh, the city of Dana Beach in a creative vibrant way through public art. And we're also in discussion and development of our first call to artist, um, which will be later on this year. It could be regarding the city anniversary, and we've also talked about partnerships with Dana After Dark. So I'd like, um, Commissioner, hand it over to Commissioner Joyce Davis, see if she wanted to say a couple of words about being the liaison.
Yes, Commissioner Davis.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Linda, and thank you to our amazing inaugural art board. You guys have been so amazing to work with our community development team, Eleanor Corrin, the whole team. It was really been, um, to have the initial board to come together. It was really great that the commission collaborated to find the right people, the right fit for this time in our city. That is so exciting. Um, the fact that we've already voted on a 1.2 million dollar sculpture, um, you know, 175 and a $45,000 donation that's coming to the city in just six months is absolutely amazing. Step by step, we are working together as a team to really, uh, bring arts to the forefront. Megan Kent is here and she's just amazing. Hi Megan, she's our other art board member. Give it up for Megan. But I won't take up too much one of your time, but I do want to say that for this to be the first board, that to have your expertise to bring everybody together the way that we've been able to do uh, in such a short amount of time has been nothing short of, of spectacular. So thank you all for all you do. Thank, it is volunteer work. You don't have to be there and you give your time and your expertise. Uh, what I do want to bring up a little bit is what we talked about at the very end. Um, I know probably in silos, different boards are talking about what we're going to do for the 2024 um, anniversary of our 120 years. I know Joanna's also the president of the Historical Society. They want to do something. The art board wants to do something. So, Manager, I know that you're like the master of master plans, but I would like to see if we get something together as a committee, as something so that we are all like have a great, whether it's a week that we plan out, whatever it is that we plan, uh, to do something spectacular for the city coming up for the, our 120th year anniversary. And with that, just thank you all for all you do. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have a special event request by the city of Dana Beach and MLK Renaissance, Inc. Is there any issues with this?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, as a matter of fact, we recommend your approval. And, um, I met earlier today with our deputy city manager and we're very excited, um, to inform you that BSO will be providing four vehicles for the parade. Um, BSO Fire will also provide several vehicles, three in total. And our public services team this year will be having four vehicles and a trailer at the parade. Um, so we're very excited and we highly recommend your support.
Thank you very much, City Manager. Can I make a motion to approve?
You made it or me?
Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the item. 3.2.
Another second? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes for the Martin Luther King Parade? Okay, next we have proclamations.
There isn't one.
There's no proclamation, so let's move on to citizen comments. Okay, first for our citizen comments, I would like to ask Eugenia Morales to please come up. Please state your name and address.
Eugenia Morales, 4014 Southeast 5th Street, Dana Beach.
Please continue.
Um, yes, it just that I'm coming to you because, um, I'm looking in desperate, looking for help and see how I can finish with this situation that I have a neighbor that, um, is insulting me, is making racist comments. He called me, sorry for the word that I'm going to say, but it's a bad word, whore, bitch, puta in Spanish, um, in front of my husband. So I would like to, to, to find out how another man, it will feel like, uh, another man called on their home, those words to the wife. So, um, he said, "You guys are riffraff, motherfuckers in front of the police even though."
Ma'am, please watch your language.
Yeah, I excuse myself, I'm just repeating.
Still, this is a public hearing? Thank you.
Okay. Um, so ugly monkey, um, and go back to your, where you're coming from. Um, knocking the door for the neighbors to continue, um, and, and, and gather them. He only have one person, um, that he, that, that he wants to, to comment and convince to. Um, he's calling constantly to the police, um, because I have a noise actually today. I want to show you the noise that he called the police on. My mother-in-law has 76 years old. She, she was on my pool doing exercise with this, um, at 2:30 PM. And he called the police saying that we were disturbing his peace because we're doing, doing a loud noise. I said, "Doesn't matter what, doesn't matter what time, doesn't matter any volume, he's bothering me." He just, I, I really, um, see that he's not home. He have cameras pointing to my pool, to my, to my privacy. Um, I cannot enjoy my pool because all his cameras are pointing to my pool. Um, and, and I cannot enjoy that my pool in peace. While he called peace for him, he need to respect what I call peace for me, that is enjoying my pool with my family, we respect as well, but you know, nobody listen music whispering, right? So, um, December 29th, he also called the police, same thing. Police said there were no noise. When police said that they cannot find any noise, he invite them to come to their, to, to inside their house and walk them through to, to convince them that it is a noise. So, um, this is really, um, affecting me. And, and, and I don't know, I, I come to you because I don't know which noise I need to knock to make sure that we finish with this. Um, he called to the city, um, and in a minute, I said, "Oh no, a car is, is parked for a minute." And he called the police and the, and the city, and the city is right there putting me a, um, a ticket because I park, um, for a moment on the grass or anything like that because for any reason it can be. My time is over.
Thank you, Mrs. Morales. I thank you for coming up. Uh, um, we respect, uh, we respect you coming up here for the public meeting, um, and we will look into it. Thank you very much. Okay, next, I would like to call up, uh, Mr. Sean DeRosa. Mr. DeRosa, please come up and state your name and address.
Sean DeRosa, 408 Southeast 5th Street, Dana. I have come before you two months ago regarding a long-term noise nuisance issue at 4014 Southeast 5th Street. Mrs. Morales and her husband Rudolph are the two owners of that property. Um, prior to this, two years prior, Ms. Garcia, I brought a noise nuisance issue to you at 402 Southeast 5th Street. And never at that, never during that time did you share with me that anything I brought to your attention was false, frivolous, or improper. During the last six or seven months, the evidence that I have shared with the- During the last six or seven months, the evidence that I have shared with the city that I've brought to the attention of our law enforcement, never once have I been put on notice that the evidence and information I'm bringing to your attention, the noise nuisance issue, is false, improper, or frivolous. Since the December hearing, they were only fined $250. I'm, I'm holding four incidents of police reports prior to that hearing. So I don't, I don't know why only two incidents showed up in the December 15 hearing if I have four police reports noting noise. Also, I don't know why they were just fined $250 because the hearing right after their hearing, there was a property owner with two noise incidents with two police reports that was fined $250 per noise incident. They were also not fined for the repetitive illegal parking. Since December 15, we had additional noise nuisance incidents. Here's another four since December 15. There's going to be a January magistrate hearing. Are these four incident police reports going to be handled at the January magistrate hearing? Is the fine going to be doubled for each consecutive noise nuisance incident report? Ms. Morales says all these things that I said nasty to her, but what she fails to share with you, that when I asked her and her husband if they could politely turn down their music, they told me to mind my own business, MF or FU. So there's always some different sides to the story, and I asked them politely. This continues to escalate. They're now telling me to move from my property, and they were laughing. I believe I was on the phone with Commissioner James when I was sharing the noise nuisance disturbance, and they were actually laughing from their driveway telling me to move. The illegal parking continues. I came to you with an ask before that I feel like we're hamstringing our officials and our, and our BSO officers that will only allow them to obtain evidence from the front property line of the noise nuisance. Can you please have an open mind and consider allowing the police officers to go to the rear of the property or to enter my property to make their own recordings of the noise nuisance? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa.
Is that two minutes or is that?
That's three minutes. Your time's up. Okay, next, we have Ed Campion. For, please come up, state your name and your address, sir.
Good evening. Yeah, my name's Ed Campion, 420 Southeast Fifth Street. I live just east of these people. And eventually you will have the police reports from about 2:11 or 12, the first year or so they moved in, you know, no big problems. And I know that it costs a lot of money to send the police out there. I know you commissioners are here to do good things, and we just want peace in the neighborhood. That's all we want. Sean's put about $250,000 into his house since he moved there. If people come by and ask, as people might do when they buy a house, especially of that quality, they're going to want to know what the neighborhood's like. And if they check the police reports and find out that the police have probably been called 50 times or 100 times to this property in the last 10 years, I don't think they'd want to move there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campion. Up next, we have Mr. Shahid Delwan. Please come up, state your name and address, sir.
My name is Shahid Delwan, and I'm the owner of Quick Stop on Dania Beach, 348 Southwest 13th Avenue. I have like, you know, the side of my store has a four, five people are always hanging around my store, and they're robbery on my customer. And every time we call the police, and the police came in, and they moved to the city area, and then police say, oh, I cannot arrest them because there is the city area. And also, I found that, you know, like I have a like lawn skip, it's nice lawn skip inside of my store, and I spent $3,000, and, and then they make a mess like that. And, and also, they have a gun showing the people, the customer, and I found the bullet also. So always they get robbery and the people, and I'm losing my customer, and now I'm losing like 50% sale of my store. So, and every time I call the police, and then police cannot do anything because there is moving to the city area. Thank you.
Mr. Delwan, can you please bring up the pictures? What's the address of the Quick Stop?
348 Southwest 13th Street.
348 Southwest 13th Street.
Southwest 13th Street.
Yeah, it's the end of Ninth Street and Dixie Highway. I know exactly where it is. Yeah, please, you still talk. Is it regarding this? Okay. No, we still have, I still have a couple more to get there. Okay, next, we have Andrea Winget.
That item is for the public hearing, item 9.2. So if you don't mind waiting to that item specifically.
Okay, we have one more public item, one more citizen comment. Okay. Hello, sir, please come up, state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Pastor Barry Bonner. Address 134 Northwest 12th Avenue here in Dania Beach, Florida. I just wanted to say, I'm so happy to be in the city of Dania Beach to share ministry with my fellow colleagues that are in the ministry. One of our goals among many goals that I have is to do whatever we can to assist each one of you in your area of responsibility and to make a great improvement in our local community where our church is located. So we ask that whatever we could do, we're just a phone call away, and we just want to know that if you can assist us in building up the community, building up our community, we appreciate it very, very much. Again, whatever we can do, please give us a call. And again, I'm so excited to share my ministry here again in the Dania Beach area. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. I appreciate that. Okay, for our next item, we have public safety reports. We'll start with our captain, Danny Marks. Captain Marks, how you doing?
Good, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Hope everybody had a Happy New Year. The gentleman that was just sitting right here with the store, he's doing the right thing by calling us. We have made several narcotics arrests at that location, and the more we get phone calls, the more proactive enforcement we can, we can take over there. Sergeant Seapod is, is the sergeant in charge of the crime suppression team. I'm going to be speaking briefly about him at the end of my report. Everyone remembers how, how cool it was on Christmas that weekend. It was pretty chilly. Well, we got a call at night of elderly female that was missing for hours and hours. So after about 13 hours, Deputy Sun and Bluey the Bloodhound actually located her about 13 blocks away in the, in the cold. So that was just a feel-good. We were able to find her and get, get her home. This week has been extremely busy. We've made quite a few really good quality arrests. Two days ago, we had several auto thefts and burglaries. Yesterday, our burglary apprehension team and our property crimes detectives along with Sergeant Seapod's crime suppression team were able to locate two of the suspects in plantation in a stolen vehicle. They were transported back to our office here where they provided confessions to not one, but two of our cases that were clumped together with multiple different crimes. So the turnaround on that case was amazing, how, how fast we got them in custody. One of the suspects was charged of one count burglary conveyance, one count of grand theft auto, five counts of unlawful possession of personal ID of another. Another case that we charged him with was one count of grand theft auto and four counts of burglary conveyance. The other suspect was charged with grand theft auto. Now, during the interviews, it was also found out that they were responsible for numerous other crimes in Deerfield Beach. The suspects were not Dania residents. They were from central Broward area, but now there's multiple charges on, on both the suspects. Recently, Sergeant Seapod was nominated as the BSO Dania Beach Employee of the Year by the Chamber of Commerce here. It was a nice event. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to go. I know there were some, some of the commissioners were there. It was a great event, and we're really thankful for the Chamber to take the time to recognize, in this case, it was Sergeant Seapod. I'd like to just read a little bit of what he's accomplished with his team. Sergeant Seapod is the supervisor for the crime suppression team, and under his direct supervision, the team has made 195 arrests and recovered 28 stolen vehicles along with six guns. Some of the notable arrests his team has made under his supervision are the arrests the suspects wanted for manslaughter with a firearm, armed robbery, robbery, shooting suspects, armed burglary residence suspects, armed trafficking in cocaine, as well as trafficking in heroin and fentanyl. Sergeant Seapod supervised his team while they participated in operations targeting catalytic converter thefts, protests at the Marriott, multiple shooting operations within the city, and Operation Safe Shopper, which we conduct during the holidays to, to keep our plazas safe. Sergeant Seapod has guided his team and led by example. He has taken his time to train new detectives to the team and teaching them the proper way of doing crime suppression work. He has had his team target high crime areas and successfully made numerous narcotics and firearm arrests by convicted felons. In addition to his crime suppression duties, he also supervises the Neighborhood Response Team. As you know, the Neighborhood Response Team, Eric and Taryn, they're always out and about. They provide support while they assist our community. Sergeant Seapod is an important part of our Dania Beach team, and he has earned this recognition by the Chamber of Commerce. So I just want to thank him for his leadership and the great work he does. That completes my report.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you, Sergeant. Commissioner James?
I just want to add to the gentleman that came up from the Quick Stop. There are few, there are few stores that are dealing sort of with the same thing. I know I called you and spoke to you about one of them, but I do really want to put some focus on our convenience stores. There, there have been high crime areas. I know people are getting desperate with, with the state of the economy and stuff right now, but it's definitely hurting our businesses. There are a lot of drug activities going on in a lot of these stores. The stores are right here in the northwest section on Fifth Avenue, 7-Eleven, that smoke shop over there. You know, we get multiple phone calls, but, but as I share with you, a lot are not as brave as this young man. They are afraid to come forward because they are afraid for their safety. And so I, I'm not sure what we can do collectively as a police department to make sure that we are focusing a little more on these convenience stores in these public areas because there, there is a lot of loitering. And I know being homeless is, is not a crime, but the loitering and, you know, littering and causing problems in these areas definitely are. So I just wanted to put that back on your radar as well.
Yes, absolutely. We actually, the one on Fifth Ave, we made a really good arrest there for vandalism, and the gentleman had a warrant out of Kansas. So they extradited him to Kansas. That was yesterday. And then a couple of days before, we had a couple narcotics arrests there. So it's on our radar. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Chief Sergio Pelisser, fire chief. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Good evening and Happy New Year. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and our fine citizens of Dania Beach. Our fire department personnel participated in various events over the month of December. We went to the State of Fort Lauderdale Christmas Parade, Lighthouse Community Church Children's Dinner. We did the Santa delivery at our Dania Beach Lions Club and the Hanukkah Celebration at Dania Point. And our crews are looking forward to the Martin Luther King Celebration coming up this week. Over the month of December, our units were dispatched 718 times. 98 of those times were fire-related, and 620 of those times were medical call-related. We did have a stabbing where our paramedics, paramedics administered whole blood, thus increasing the patient's chance of survival in this traumatic event. So whole blood consists of red blood cells, white blood cells, platelets that are also suspended in plasma. We have a unit based out of our Station 17. He's a captain, and he, he rides around the county, but he's based out of Dania Beach. And he is dispatched whenever there's a shooting, a stabbing, any traumatic call, serious car accident. So he's dispatched with our rescue units. And he carries the red blood, the whole blood with him. So thus helping any patient or any visitor in, in Dania Beach, should they have a traumatic event, increasing their chances of survival. So it's something good to have for our department, it's something good to have for our citizens and visitors in Dania Beach. And trying to keep, you know, moving forward in this new age, we're looking at the cost in training for our trucks to carry portable ultrasound machines. These machines will help us find injuries that we otherwise can't see. And we're always doing to, trying to do what's the best practice to serve our citizens and, and visitors in Dania Beach. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, now for item seven. Are there any items that we wish to pull from the consent agenda? Commissioner James?
I wish to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. The ayes have it. Consent agenda is passed unanimously. Okay, we don't have any bids and proposals, so let's move to public hearings. And I would like to take out of order and begin with item 9.2 first. Eve, can you please read it off?
Absolutely. It's ordinance 2023-001. It's an ordinance of the city of Dania Beach approving an inter-local service boundary agreement with the city of Hollywood and Broward County for the contraction of certain lands located within the jurisdictional limits of the city of Hollywood and within the area known as the city of Dania Beach Ocean Park and the annexation of that land by the city of Dania Beach, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. This is first reading, and it is a city attorney item. So if you don't mind, I'd like to give a short presentation. I'd like to acknowledge there are two residents here, and I'm sorry I'm bad with their names, but I think they've signed up to speak anyway. They're here from the Renaissance over in Hollywood adjacent to the park. And of course Andrea Winget back in the back, who is the Assistant Community Direct, Assistant Director of Development over at the city of Hollywood. And she's been very helpful to us in this process. So I wanted to give you just a little insight. As you know, I think I announced at the last meeting that the mayor and I went to the last Hollywood Commission meeting. It was their first reading of this interlocal agreement, and it was approved with the conditions that we've previously discussed, and those have been incorporated into this draft interlocal agreement. Those conditions are basically to provide, get input from the community, the, the Hollywood community affected by any parking garage that we would build, and also to allow for the parking with those from Hollywood with a Hollywood residential pass in our parking garage once it's built for up to a 20-year period, four, five-year periods, excluding weekends and major holidays, national holidays. On Friday, as you know, there was circulated this morning a revised interlocal agreement because FDOT did provide some input. It's not material to the terms with the city of It's not material to the terms with the City of Hollywood, in short, it basically says we are going to use this property for the purpose that we've been discussing, which is for public parking. Now, at the time, I didn't realize they had an older version, the original version of the Isla, so we are still waiting for additional input from FDOT on those two conditions that Hollywood has asked us to add in, which is the public input on the garage and the parking by Hollywood residents. So by the time we have second reading on this ordinance, we should have that input. I'll let the residents speak for themselves, but I understand that there are some concern by the residents as to the Lucky Fish, they would like input on Lucky Fish. I just, I'm going to say this for their benefit and anyone in the audience's benefit. Lucky Fish already has a contract, as you know, we've already gone through that process, we had the public hearing, we had the process, and January of last year is when we signed a contract with Lucky Fish and we put quite a few conditions on Lucky Fish as to when they go forward and operate and what noise levels they could be at. So we put cautionary language in the agreement and I've shared it with Andrea, who I will also be sharing it again tomorrow in a cover letter, but basically informing the community, the Hollywood community that is concerned that Lucky Fish is not a music venue. Lucky Fish is a cafe restaurant that would have ambient music, could have up to, now I'm confusing myself, it's either five or six special event applications a year. And in short, they have to stop music at 10 o'clock, they have to hire a sound consultant, and the whole idea, and specifically written into the contract, is that the sound is intended to go north of the Lucky Fish, not south towards the residents. And I actually reached out again today to Lucky Fish to find out where we are in hiring the consultant so that he can go out to the Renaissance and determine what ambient is, et cetera. So I wanted to put that on the record to make the residents aware that that is something that we've already taken care of in the existing agreement, that I don't have the ability to change that agreement at this point and I don't want anything we do today to interfere with that agreement. That being said, Lucky Fish still has to come to the City Commission for a site plan approval. When they come to the site plan approval, the residents of the Renaissance, like anyone else, can be informed and advised to come and speak and, you know, present any testimony they'd like about their concerns and that can be taken into consideration by the City Commission. I have advised Andrea and these residents that it's not something I would put into this agreement and the reason is it's quasi judicial, meaning you're supposed to take it at that meeting when it comes before you as a site plan on Lucky Fish at that time, not presuppose conditions on it without any evidence, without any testimony, and without Lucky Fish being present. It would be a due process violation of their rights and I don't want to get us into that. So, but I do take their concerns seriously and I know that they have concerns and it would be a contractual obligation of Lucky Fish to maintain the levels, the sound levels that are written into the contract and that can be enforced not just by code compliance but by the city itself with an injunction. So the next steps, if FDOT has no changes, we will go to a second reading, as will the City of Hollywood, and hopefully get this done. Once we have both signed off with our second reading, because all development, interlocal agreements have to have two readings, it then goes for the final reading to the county and then we'll be done. So I hope by March we will have this part done and then we can go to FDOT and FAU for the next steps.
Thank you Eve.
My pleasure.
Andrea, would you speak on this?
Andrea Winget, City of Hollywood, that's okay. Usually it's the last name that people have trouble with.
I'm Greek, I make it all wrong, I apologize.
That's how most people say it. Yeah. Your city staff has been a pleasure to work with, your city manager's office, your city attorney, they have really just been trying to balance the needs and work with at least four different government entities, FAU and everyone to get this done. The goal here, and I think it's actually a joint goal, is to, you know, reduce parking and reduce impacts on the barrier island or reduce traffic circulation by providing additional public parking on the barrier island. And that helps not only Hollywood but Dania too. And we look forward to continuing to work with Dania to address any other future impacts such as noise or anything that may come about, and I leave that up to the attorneys to determine the best way to move forward with that.
Thank you Andrea. On this item, I have Mr. Eric Ram, do you wish to speak on this item sir? All right, come on up. And yeah, there's somebody else, but they're not listed. Please come up and state your name and address.
Yes, I'm Eric Ram and my address is 6051 North Ocean Drive, just over, barely over the line from Dania. And we live at Renaissance and it's funny, whenever we invite people over, they scratch their heads and they say, isn't this in Dania? So we really are very close to Dania and we're very impacted by everything that happens, good and bad, at the Dania Beach Ocean Park. And we recently found out about the swap or the seeding of the land from Hollywood to Dania. And there is a clause in the interlocal agreement draft that says that in the construction and development of the parking garage, the community, the Hollywood community will be consulted and have a voice, a formal voice, which is written into the agreement. And we thought that this would be a perfect time, right now, since there's this spirit of neblinious and cooperation between the cities, with Hollywood seeding the land, this would be a perfect time to also recognize the role, a formal role for the community in the development and even the operation of the Lucky Fish. It seems like a perfect time and that's really the only reason we're here tonight. Now we've been told that by the legal opinion that maybe there will be a legal conflict, we have to look at that, we just found that out. You know, we're in the process of talking with our own city, Hollywood, about this. But I just want to say that, you know, we do have a history, and Dania Beach, by the way, has been wonderful, the City of Dania Beach. We have a history with the Dania Beach Grill where we had meetings that the City of Dania Beach participated in, and they were really magnificent. They actually took our side against the operator at that point. But there was some, there were some gaps in enforcement, so the best of intentions really didn't pan out, unfortunately, and we took the brunt of it through the noise, which continued. I know that the Lucky Fish is a completely different entity from the Dania Beach Grill, but we would ask respectfully for you to seriously consider a formal, actually almost a carbon copy of the language in the interlocal that relates to community involvement in the garage, almost a carbon copy should be included at whatever stage, I would say now, but at whatever stage in the Lucky Fish situation so that we can consult and we have a formal role so we avoid a Dania Beach Grill situation where the best of intentions don't follow through, because we're the ones that are, when they have these six special events, we're the ones that are going to be hearing the noise. Thank you very much.
Thank you Mr. Ram, I appreciate it. We have another individual would like to speak on this item? Nope, okay, perfect, thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to call this to, anybody have anything to say on this? Commissioner James?
I'd like to make a motion to pass 9.1, I mean 9.2.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Motion nine, what's 9.1 or 9.2 now?
Now it's 9.1.
Yeah, motion 9.1 has passed unanimously.
I'm sorry, 9.2.
9.2, it was moved to 9.1, well it was moved ahead of 9.1, it's passed unanimously for the interlocal agreement with Hollywood.
Correct, now if you'd like, I'll read 9.1.
Please.
It's Resolution 2022-190, it's a resolution of the City Commission approving the site plan and variances for the property owner Hydra Source Corp. for property located 3581 Southwest 26 Terrace in the City of Dania Beach, providing for conditions, conflicts, and an effective date. This one, although it's a public hearing, is also quasi judicial, so I'll need to swear in anyone who's going to be testifying today, including any people in the public that would like to speak on this application. So if you are going to speak, please raise your right hand, including staff. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I don't.
Perfect, thank you. This is quasi judicial, so before you go forward, are there any disclosures that need to be made by the City Commission as to any communications by the applicant or the public as to this application?
I briefly spoke with Henry, right here at the meeting just prior, just to go over.
Okay, and are you able to remain impartial after having had that communication?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'm here to present Hydra Source Corp. So this is a site plan and variance application. They are located at 3581 Southwest 26 Terrace at the corner intersection of Southwest 26, I'm sorry, 36th Street and 26th Terrace. The zoning district is an IRAM AA, an industrial research office, marine airport approach, and the future land designation is industrial. The applicant is proposing to construct, or requesting actually, a site plan approval for the construction of one-story warehouse building of 9,272 square feet with associated infrastructure, which includes machine shop, office, and storage space. This is the site plan proposed for the development. The property has two very large oak trees, which I'm going to point to the front here, these two big oak trees right there. And this project has been designated, designed specifically to maintain these trees on site. Maintaining the two oak trees has caused a significant accommodation and sacrifice to building footprint and parking locations. Being a good source of the existing site conditions, the applicant is requesting variance applications. So this is how the building is going to look like. These are the renderings of the side, the south side and the north side of the building. And the variances they're requesting are three in total. One for the perimeter landscape offered to the north of a property, the code requires them to have a five-foot setback, they're proposing, or they're requesting only to have a 1.7 foot. The second variance is for building separation from the parking area to the start of the building on the south side of the building, the code requires them to have eight foot, they're proposing six. And the third request is off-street required parking, they're required to have 15 parking spaces and they're only proposing 13. The variance request maintain the basic intent and purpose of the regulations, are compatible with the surrounding land uses, and will not be detrimental to the community. Their request is consistent with and furtherance of the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan, requesting, and by requesting the minimum necessary to afford relief preserving the character, health, and safety of the community. The applicant did a community outreach, sending out notices to properties within 1,000 feet of the property notifying them, and we did not receive any objections about this application. As well as they went through the whole process of the DRC review, the first review was on June 8th, the second review was on October 12th, and although they have some comments still to be completed, they can be addressed at the time of building permit and they can be used as condition of approvals in the resolution. As this project will be a development that will bring the city's tax roll and will be required to pay the following impact fees associated, which are the public impact fee, administrative impact fees, police, fire, and any other Broward County impact fees that may apply to the project. And they, this application supports the city's strategic plan by furthering the following goals, the objectives, and they have a sense of community, the value to our neighbors and our community, protection and enhancement, enhancement of property values, and the short-term challenges and opportunities which are expanding businesses, investment in Dania Beach. The city staff recommends approval of these site plan and variances and remaining with the DRC comments as conditions of approval. The applicant is here as well, if you have any further questions about the activities of the business.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, does anybody have anything to say to or for this item? Commissioner James?
Make a motion to pass 9.1.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 9.1 has passed unanimously. On to item 9.3.
It's ordinance, thank you, it's ordinance 2023-002, an ordinance of the City Commission amending Chapter 28 of the Land Development Code, Part 8, Technical Appendix, Article 811 Public Art Program. By amending Article 811 at Section 81120, definitions, Section 81130 Public Art Plan and Implementation Guidelines, Section 81140 in Artist Selection Criteria, Public Art Program Guidelines to Require Compliance with Procurement Guidelines, Section 811130 Public Art Advisory Board, and Section 811140 Mural Guidelines, to clarify that all murals and artwork, whether purchased with public art funds or not, and whether donated to the city or purchased by the city or a third person, would require review of the Public Art Advisory Board and recommendation from said board to the City Commission. Provided for conflicts, severability, codification, and effective date, this is first reading and is a community development item. That was a long one.
Thank you Eve.
Good evening, Corinne LaJoy, Assistant Director of Community Development. This is a text amendment to our public art ordinance and it is first reading. The, just a reminder about our public art program, December 10th of 2019, the City Commission established the Public Art Fund. In April of '22, the City Commission created and appointed the city's Public Art Advisory Board, those are the members that you met earlier this, this meeting. Today, the request is for amendments to identify and clarify the roles of the Public Art Advisory Board. The clarification will ensure all public art installed in the city is reviewed by the Public Art Advisory Board and is consistent with the adopted Public Art Master Plan and Guidelines. So really, the ordinance is broken down into three components. The first is it provides a detailed definition of what public art is, so that we're all clear in what that is. It also, the next thing it does is identify that any art, any public art established by the City Commission, murals or otherwise, shall be required to have the Public Art Advisory Board's recommendation, even if it's not utilizing the Public Art Fund. And the final kind of component to this amendment is that all selection of artists or art pieces recommended by the Public Art Advisory Board shall comply with the city's procurement policy guidelines and shall be approved by the City Commission regardless of cost. So this is just kind of a series of amendments to clarify and be crystal clear how the policy and how the program should be operating going forward. And that concludes our presentation, oops, I'm sorry, it did go to the Planning and Zoning Board in December, they recommended approval, it's an ordinance, so it requires two readings at commission, this is first reading. And with that, the Planning and Zoning Board did recommend approval, that you as the commission approve the text amendments and we're recommending approval as well, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you Corinne.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Salvino?
Thank you. Corinne? Don't you leave. So I understand that we have an Arts of Public Places Board was designed for the murals and so on, and I think some of the commission probably will ask the same question, maybe or not, but would, how long has it been, if somebody wants to paint their building or put a mural in their building, have we always had a permit that's had to be pulled for that?
So the public art, you're making me go back to our establishment dates, so the Public Art Advisory Board was established April of, just last year, '22. And so that's when, shortly after, we made amendments to create mural regulations. Prior to that, the, it was called a super graphic, and there were guidelines that super graphics had to be submitted for review and approval by the Community Development Director. So there's always been a process, now it's more formal and it goes to our Public Art Advisory Board.
So, so the process right now is that somebody give us a step-by-step process of the way it works now with public art?
So currently, when there's a proposal for a mural, we forward that information to Linda, our Public Art Consultant, who reviews, makes sure it has all the information that's required, such as maintenance, cost, there's a draft, make sure that it's durable material, it's not going to fade in the sun, it'll be graffiti resistant, all that good stuff. So she makes sure that the application is complete with all its components and then she does an analysis and then we present that to the Public Art Advisory Board.
So in other words, if anybody that puts anything other than a color, white or blue or on the building, and it goes in any kind of design at all, it has to use a different type of a paint, it's got to be approved? and everything's gotta go in front of the Community Development Director and the Public Arts Board, correct?
That's correct, and so, our code currently allows buildings to have three, a total of three colors, when you add in the trim and stuff like that. So, there's a total of three colors that are permitted. So, yeah, anything beyond that, we start getting into murals.
Okay, so obviously, we have three new buildings. I understand tonight from Eve that we have three buildings that are out there that have been cited for them putting their murals on without permitting.
Correct.
So, with that being said, how did they go about doing this? Just, they just went and did it and didn't ask permissions, what they did?
Correct.
Okay, and?
The community development was not aware of it.
Okay, it just seems a little odd that when these things start going up in the very beginning, maybe, maybe they did before the buildings were finished, that we didn't stop them before they got too far, because it was pretty obvious that the paintings were going up from the day one.
Yeah, I wasn't actually made aware of it until the last month's Planning Public Art Advisory Board, when some of the board members said, what about this? And what about this one?
All right, so, you know, in other words, now that these buildings are all been painted without the approval of the public art, so I'm sure there's thousands and thousands of dollars went into these, these murals. And even if the murals are appropriate for the, the building, they know, that's, that's, that's there, and it looks appropriate to their type of business, and it's not inappropriate to the public, they still may have to do it all over again because they don't have the right paint, is that what you're saying?
It's possible, I mean, there, I think there's also a finish that can be applied after the fact, that talks about the anti-graffiti stuff. But, yeah, we'll have to look at, because we want, if there's something beautiful and it was done correctly, we certainly want to be able to maintain it and have it, you know, be there for a while. So, there's, we just wanna make sure it's not gonna fade, that it's proper.
Well, I think that the money they spend on making it there, I think they don't want it to fade either.
Right.
I'm just, and I'm a little confused on, you know, I have a hard time trying to establish, I mean, it's, to me, it seems like a business that, maybe not a public building, but you have a, a big truck, that's the city of Dana Beach business, and all of a sudden you put a mural on the side of the truck, what's the difference in that, moving around the city? That's still a Dana Beach business, maybe licensed through the city Dana Beach. Now, you have a truck, but that doesn't require any of those requirements, but you have it on a building.
Yes.
And I feel, I feel like we're picking on people, honestly. And so, I mean, that's up to, I'm just bringing it to the commission's attention, and then they can just, you know, just decide what they wanna do on the vote and so on. But, I'm a little bit opposed on some of this, I'm all in public arts, as you know. I just don't like sometimes how we create so many rules for people out there, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner James?
Yes, thank you. What exactly is being approved once a private business? I understand why we did it internally, but what's, what exactly is being approved? Just the paint, the, the finish, or is the entire design?
The design.
So, it has to be what is envisioned by the Public Arts Board?
No, no, we just have to understand the, what is being proposed. We need to make sure it doesn't have letters, numbers, because then it becomes a sign and not a mural. So, there's different things that we have to look at in terms of content.
That's what I'm asking, what exactly is being approved? So, for example, if, if a building comes and they wanna put some type of mural on the building, I have no idea. Maybe they think it's beautiful, maybe we think it's not. Could the Art in Public Places Board, and then it comes back to the commission, and what's the timeline on that? That's another question, but could the Art in Public Places Board say, we don't, we don't like this painting?
Well, no, so it's, you're right, art is very subjective. So, it's really not looking at the, the image of what they're presenting. We're not gonna say, well, we don't like blue, make it purple, I mean, that's not the intent. It's really to look at the graphic, to make sure it follows the regulations, make sure it's gonna be sustainable over time, make sure that it doesn't have letters and numbers, and it's not a, you know, venturing into our sign code. And to make sure that it's a complete and, and done to the best quality. That can be, because they also asked for, I think, a biography of the artist, and maybe some other examples of, that the artist did, so that we see that it's not a bunch of grade schoolers painted on the side of a wall. I mean, we, if we're gonna have public art, we want a high-quality public art in the city.
So, then it's gonna be subjective then, I mean, if, if they decided to do a public arts project with some kids who don't have an extensive history or a portfolio to show. I, I just don't wanna, I understand about the sustainability and making sure that it's not fading, and we don't have patches of, of, of art that's missing from buildings. I, I don't like the process of being able to dictate exactly what they have on their building, if it's not numbers and letters, if it's art, and if they're paying for it. I heard you say something about three colors, is it three colors that constitute a mural?
No, the three colors that you can paint normally, any building is usually limited, we usually limit to three colors, the body, the trim, you know, things like that. So, it comes down to three colors, is what the code allows. So, anything beyond that, we start to venture into the murals. But let me also say that the Public Art Advisory Board is an advisory board, that we have professionals on there for their professional art experience and recommendations, but they are advisory capacity, so they're gonna make a recommendation to the commission, and the commission has the final say on the things that go through that, that board.
And how long is that process? So, if I just bought a building and I want to put something up there, and before, I can just go to Community Development and get that design approved, and now I have to wait for the next advisory board meeting, and then wait for the next commission meeting before I can start that process?
So, the, a Public Art Advisory Board meets once a month, so it depends on when that supplemental comes in, that, that we have to have adequate time for staff and our consultants to analyze the, the information that's presented before we get it to the agenda. And then, once it's on the agenda, we can probably get it on, the commission, as you know, meets twice a month, so I'm thinking like the following month, we'll be able to get in front of the commission.
Okay, the only part I don't like about it is being able to tell them that, no, I don't, you know, we need to see a biography or other work that you've done for your own personal building that you're paying rent on. And I understand that they're professionals and have all these qualifications, but they're not paying rent. You know, they're not paying for the business, and they're a business owner. I think if it's not offensive, if it's not, you know, words or, or letters, or it doesn't violate those technical details, I, I don't think that we should tell people, you know, who's qualified to paint on them, especially if they have the sustainable colors. It's just, that's, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mayor James, Commissioner Salvino?
Yeah, I just, one thing you said that caught my ear, that I think I, I understand a little bit more on certain things. When they do put a mural on there, I knew, I know that we do have a sign ordinance, and if they included that into the, made it so big on the side of the wall, who they are, and the, and the phone numbers and stuff, and the address, I know that breaches our, our sign ordinance. I can see that, it's just, I'm just hoping that the three that we have out there now, that they're not, they're close enough that we don't have to go having them spend thousands of dollars to correct it, because it probably wouldn't be easy, so wherever we're at, but we need to maybe, I guess, fine-tune it a little bit, and just, maybe with this ordinance here would do it, but it's just, I hate to see, you know, people are gonna make the decision on their own. They might be, I guess they'll know from now on, but it's just, they all look good, that's the thing.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify what Corinne said, that you guys have the ultimate decision of what is placed on the mural. So, the, like she said, the board just is an advisory board, they make a recommendation to you, you would have to say yes or no.
I have a question, I just need to know, what's the application process from start to finish? And is there any monetary fee associated with it? Like, just, you know, do you get a application online, do you get it through City Hall?
Yeah, so we use the standard development application that we have for all site plans, variance applications. And it's the five-hundred-dollar application fee.
Five-hundred dollars, okay.
And about a week to review and get it up in the agenda.
A week to get it on the review, yeah, and then the advisory board have to meet, has to meet on it first, and then it comes before the commission?
Yes, depending on those dates, it could be heard in the same month, but like she said, depending when, when they come in and what the date of the advisory board meeting is, is how quickly we can get it before the commission.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, this is a public hearing, does anybody have anything to say against or for this item? Go ahead, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Davis?
Motion to approve.
I have a second. Commissioner Salvino? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. We have one, one opposed. Okay, moving on, let, let it be known that item nine point three has passed with a vote of four to one regarding the application process and the approval through the Public Arts Board. All right, now for section ten, we have discussion and possible action.
No, no discussion items.
No discussion items, so let's move on to commission comments, and we'll start with Commissioner Davis first.
Well, I'm going to keep this brief and just say Happy New Year. I went to so many events over the holidays, I wanna thank all the residents who are, reach out to us and ask us to attend their different holiday events. It was a wonderful holiday season here in Dana Beach. Normally, I travel and go different places, but this time I was able to just enjoy the sunshine over the holidays. The one thing I do wanna bring up is, I think, prior to Mayor Ryan being elected, that I did a, a presentation for advertising Dana Beach, and I, we had gotten approval to do a workshop so that we could really get this process, the RFP, the RFP process can take months to develop, so I wanted to make sure that we get something on the calendar soon as possible, so that we can move forward with advertising Dana Beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner James?
Oh, yes, thank you. I have a few things. I wanted to, to see, I wanted to bring up first and foremost, I, I know that we have the, the two residents here from the noise ordinances, and I don't know how we're going to resolve this. It does seem to now be getting into kind of a, a safety issue and a dangerous territory for staff and, and, and yourselves. I don't know what we could do, I do want to review holistically with the city attorney, the, the noise ordinance. I, I want to see, are there things that we could do as a city that could alleviate anything? Or if this is completely out of our hands, I, I am not sure, but I know that we, we have been bombarded with phone calls and for service calls, and our public safety and our BSO and our code department does a great job, and they have a lot of calls to tend to, and I know that this has been a high-call-volume area. And so, I, I do wanna set up a meeting to see what we can do in, in order to just make this smoother or better quality of life for, for everyone involved in the situation. That's, that's first and foremost. I wanna send my, I wanna send my sympathy to Rosalyn Curry. She, she serves on the Housing Authority Board. She's also a good family friend, her son was, was murdered over the Christmas holiday, or over the New Year's holiday, right there at one of our stores in our community, and so, I'm sending our love to her. And the condolences to Calvin Black Senior, another longtime Dana Beach resident in our city that lost his fight to cancer. And last but not least, my, my Uncle Nuki, as I call him, from, from our American Legion post. I think he owned the building, if I'm, or did a lot with that building. He owned a lot of those properties, and, and when the CRA came up, the Rebuilding America, they did two of his homes. And so, as we mourn his, his loss and our loss this weekend, I keep my family in our prayers as well. With that being said, I also want to approve some of my contingency funds. I did not see in the budget for the Financial Literacy Program for the summer camp again this year. I know it was a great hit, I heard nothing but great things about it, for all of our parks and recreation programs. And so, I want to put that again in rotation, in hopes of next year it becoming a, a part of the budget. I, I think last year, the cost was around seven thousand dollars for complete sessions, certificates, materials that they can take home, workbooks and all of that. I am not sure exactly what the cost is, if it, if it went up or not because of inflation, but I, I will get that back. But I wanted to know if there's any issue with that from anyone? For my personal contingency, yes.
I have no issue with that, but I'd also like to, if you find out how much it's gonna be, I may donate some of mine as well.
Oh, awesome, all right, thank you. Any other questions? Got questions? Thank you. And, and last but not least, I know with the MLK Parade, I know Parks and Recreation have been working, has been working extremely hard. It has been a struggle to try and get rental cars. I have been on the phone, I know that staff has been on the phone. And the, the last quote that came to me before today was twenty-nine hundred dollars for one day for cars for all of us to be able to ride in the parade. And so, I am, I'm working to get that down, because I know that we have contracts with, I think, Hertz and, and Budget. I'm not sure if we got that completely down or not, but I know this is a, a huge cost to incur. So, I am, I'm going to ask that I split half of that, if it's that amount of money, with my contingency funds as well. Again, so we can all have convertible vehicles to ride on in the parade. Any issues with that? Nope. All right, and with that, that completes my, my comments. I hope to see you all for the festivities for MLK Saturday. There will be a gala at, or dinner at IT Parker Center. And Monday, there'll be a parade, a prayer breakfast, along with a peace in the park event at CW Thomas Park. Thank you to everyone who has helped make this happen for the MLK Renaissance Corporation.
Thank you, Commissioner James, Commissioner Salvino?
I just, my only comment is to say Happy New Year to everybody. I've been out of town a lot, so I really haven't involved myself with much, so just Happy New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Keeping mine short and sweet too, but I do wanna send my sympathies out to Roz Curry. I know she's been beside herself with losing her son, and she's been a great contributor to our city as well. So, I feel for her, that's a terrible, terrible event that took place. Otherwise, Happy New Year, everybody, let's hope it gets better. It's been a kinda rough couple of weeks so far, so hopefully, everything will be on a brighter path for the future. And I know, I just handed something to the mayor from Commissioner Davis that came from Love Our Nation, a little thank you card to the commission, so I'm sure he'll talk about that, so, thanks. Well, she, she may.
Bring it back to her, bring it back to her, thanks.
I'm gonna share, thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I forgot, I put this big card on my desk, and I, and I meant to bring it back. If you were at the last commission meeting, you got to see Love Our Nation. These are wonderful children in our community who are taking finance classes, who are taking golf classes, who are learning and volunteering at the patch. They are being taught how to write thank you letters and thank you notes, and this, and they need golf equipment, they need transportation. So, this is a request, I'll, I'll put it out to the public that I, I would like to take at least a thousand dollars for my personal contingency, but I would like to see if there, if I could get support to give a certain amount from the commission contingency to this organization to help further their efforts with these children. And I wanted to have some discussion, I don't have a set number in mind, but I did wanna support these kids because they have put skin in the game, they have, they are great, they are the future of Dana Beach, and they, they've been here for a long time, and we want to support their future. So, I wanted to get your opinion, get your discussion on that, because I did wanna make a donation from our commission contingency to see whether or not you guys are willing to help support the organization.
Commissioner James?
Yes, what do we do with the charitable donation process? Did we ever come back to that, or we're getting rid of, what are we doing with that? I can't remember, honestly, does anyone remember?
I don't remember, I think we created a policy on what our charitable donations are, and I'll bring it back to you, or send it to you over the next week, so you have that?
Uh-uh, Frank, Frank, Frank gotta answer, honey.
I just don't remember.
As Frank comes up, I, I think that, that we had just decided to put that, that two hundred for the, for the commission and in addition to
Into the contingency?
The twenty-five for each and every one of you, maybe Frank will.
Is it in the budget?
We, well, currently, the budget has, it has three hundred and twenty-five thousand total contingency. 125,000 of that is each individual elected official's discretionary fund account. And then the other 200,000 is, is the contingency, which in the workshop we had, 100,000 of that was earmarked for the advertising program, which is going to be worked out.
Okay, so we, so for, for good, we are done with the charitable organizations?
There is no separate line item budget for charitable donations.
Okay. Okay, and right now our contingency stands at what?
It's 25 for each and then 200 for the whole.
200 for the whole.
So 325 in total?
Yeah, 325 total.
Do you have a, a recommendation of what you want to give? I don't, I don't mind taking it out of the contingency. I, I love those kids too. I see them and I see their dedication and their hard work. The only concern I'm going to have is you set a precedent for other people coming and we have to have some sort of scale of why we give to one and not the other. So I don't mind giving to all the charities, so I don't know how we, we. Well, they came out of the personal contingency.
2,000, yeah.
I don't want to, unless we have parameters, because you have someone else coming up here, it'll be, it's happened, it was a big mess. So whatever you want to do.
Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Yeah, I, and I think what we were doing, if I'm not mistaken, is if we have individual charities that we want to donate to, we can do that. If other people want to join in on that, so be it, like we just, we just talked about with the financial literacy thing. I mean, there, I don't, I don't know that it's a good precedent to set for the entire commission contingency to do because then it does become a, who are you giving money to and who are you not? If you want to personally do it, that's fine. If somebody wants to add to it, that's fine. But I think if you, if you start getting into this realm of we're going to take it out of commission, then we go back, right back to our charitable donations again, which became a problem. And they kind of got out of hand for a while there, so.
Commissioner James?
I'll donate 1,000 for my contingency to match 1,000, Commissioner Davis.
Okay. Anybody opposed?
He's not here to offer it.
But Commissioner Salvino, do we have authorization for $1,000 from your contingency?
To do what?
For the kids.
For Love Our Nation.
Love Our Nation, those kids that came here.
Sure, why not?
See?
So 3,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I just add the one thing? As I, I'm sorry, one, I just wanted to ask something real quick. And I think probably everybody here probably wants to know. We had talked briefly about Lucky Fish when you were talking about the parking garage. Do we know the status of Lucky Fish and where they are at this point? Eleanor? I think it would be who of all of us to know what the current status is because I'm sure everybody's getting questions. I know I get questions almost weekly.
Yes, they are working diligently behind the scenes, let me tell you. They've had, I recently had a great conversation with Chris today, he's a representative from Lucky Fish. And they've completed two full rounds of DRC review, addressing all the specific comments for each department, engineering landscape. The design team has also been coordinating with the state to find a acceptable finished floor elevation. As you know, the grade there is very low. It's a four NAVD. And the state requires new construction east of the coastal construction line to be at, at that area 17 feet NAVD, which is a huge difference, a huge delta. So we've been working with the building official, the state and FEMA representatives and come to an agreement that this service area can remain at 10 feet NAVD, which is the Tiki Hut and all the restaurant facilities and the restaurant, or the, I'm sorry, the kitchen itself must be elevated to the 17 foot. So the design team has reworked the, the plans, being that it's a unique site in its shape and size. There's going to be some variance applications that will accompany the site plan when it does come to you. He has said that he would submit before February 1st to allow for us to advertise and get it to you before commission. I think it's February 24th agenda. We also discussed expedited plan review, allowing concurrent review with the county agency and the city's building department to help expedite that permit review process. It will run through the special permitting office, which has the on-demand plan review and expedited inspection services. So we'll expedite it through the construction phase as well. We've confirmed with the building official that there are early start requests and special request permits that can be approved from the city manager and the building official to allow the construction to move, construction to move very quickly, once the shovels do get in the ground. So that's about all I know. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Okay, for my comments, Happy New Year, go Dolphins. And I'd like to keep it also brief, but I would actually like to recognize somebody that's in our, in the crowd right now today. And Mr. Pinella, if you could stand? So you know how much we care about our first responders, our firefighters, our police officers. Mr. Pinella, PJ Pinella, he comes from a longtime Dania family. The Pinellas have been here, I think, for probably over 70 years. And he grew up in Hollywood and he is an active duty service member for the United States Coast Guard. Petty Officer Second Class Paul Pinella. He just got back from deployment. He was deployed for three months in the Baltic Sea. He, he was in Turkey, Finland, Riga, Latvia. He was on a 90-day patrol in support of the US Navy in the Baltic Sea. And, you know, I like to honor our active service members. And Mr. Pinella, just want to say thank you very much for coming tonight. Commissioner Salvino?
Mr. Pinella, you know, I'm a longtime Dania resident and, you know, I go back all the way watching, I guess your grandfather laid tile for years and I remember how hard he worked. And I remember your father very, very well. We, we hung out a lot and your uncle Eugene as well. And we had a lot of, I have a lot of great memories with your family, a lot, and I'm very proud of you for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Salvino. Okay, now for section 12, we have appointments.
I have one. For Parks, Recreation and Community Affairs Advisory Board, I would like to appoint Keith Roberts. I don't have his information on me, but he, he either is currently or was previously a member of the Airport Advisory and something else.
Through the mayor. If he has not moved, we'll find him.
He hasn't moved. He knows where he lives. That's the only one I have right now. Thanks.
I wanted to change the alternate Kim for, unfortunately, at this moment cannot be the alternate for P&amp;Z. So I wanted to suggest Cheryl Baker Hill. She's a retired teacher that lives in the community. I have her phone number, Tom, I'll send it to you. I don't want to say it.
Does anybody have any issues with the appointment for alternate?
No.
No? Okay.
I'm up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have an appointment for the Green Advisory Board, Charlene Hogan. She was on there before. I think she was under Commissioner Oddman's thing and moved her over to my appointment because my appointment has not been showing up.
Okay.
Everybody all right with that?
Yes, sir.
Then I have an appointment, Tom had given me a name, which he thought was.
For the education?
Yeah, the education.
There's a member by the name of Mary Jane Guerra, who was appointed by former Commissioner Oddman. She continues to serve under the 120-day rule because there's still a vacancy on the board. So if you'd like to appoint her, then that'll.
Was her, was her attendance good before that?
As far as I understand, her attendance is good.
Okay, then I'll, I'll, I'll recommend that appointment. As long as they're showing up, that's what I like.
Who is my appointment on the education board?
Through the mayor. Your appointment, Vice Mayor Llewellyn, is Amy Erdaneta?
Oh, yeah. I'd like to reappoint her.
Okay.
She was good.
Commissioner James?
No, when everyone's finished, I'd like to make a motion to approve all the appointments. Do you have any, Mayor? Okay, anyone finished?
I have a second. All in favor? Aye unanimously approved. Okay, now for administrative reports. City manager?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, residents that are here and our city team. Happy New Year to everybody. In regards to our marketing session, our chief of staff, Maxine, are going, she's going to be sending you some dates. We were discussing that earlier today, so we can get that workshop. I know that we've set aside $100,000 to promote our city, so we're all very excited about that. Additionally, we are getting ready to go back to Tallahassee. We've had some great trips with Vice Mayor Llewellyn, Commissioner Davis. And we're getting close to that $5 million mark for the past three years that we've been knocking doors in, in Tallahassee. So we're very excited. We are going to be sending some dates, but we're looking at the week of February the 13th or the week of February the 20th to go to Tallahassee. And we're working very diligently with our Parks Department, with our deputy city manager and Public Services to be able to seek more dollars for storm drainage for parks like we've had the past three years. We're very excited about that. Earlier today, I met with our deputy city manager and our Parks Director. Both of them working very diligently with Parks Team and Public Services to get ready for the MLK Parade. And I just wanted to let everybody know that we have a five-man crew from Public Services that are going to be deployed at 6:00 AM on the day of the parade to make sure that the, the route is, is clean. And before and after the parade, there will be cleanup and one person to work at the park from 7:00 AM until the event ends. Additionally, we're working on the parks, making sure that everything from, from landscaping to all the trimmings and everything looks perfect for the day of the event. I got great news today. We've been very aggressive in regards to seeking FDOT to be able to paint the exterior wall of the Malaluka community. As you know, we invested on the inside and it's their responsibility. So if you knock it off, if you send enough emails, if you call enough, you know what, the door does open. So Candido discussed with me this past week that they will be painting on their dime the FDOT, the wall at Malalukas, who's going to look really nice and continue to, to complement what we're doing on the Griffin Boulevard with, with our completed landscaping there as well. I also wanted to let you know that spending about eight days in, in London and seeing how awesome they do the holidays and, and how, you know, not just the city contributes, but all the storefronts. I'm looking to put together our, our committee to work with our local merchants and, and ensure that our storefronts are aligned with what the city is also investing in, in, in the holidays and, and the holiday decor. And I think that's something that we're going to be bringing forward together and putting a member of the CRA, perhaps working with, with Bill, who I know is very, very active, and working on some really cool projects. Because as you know, we are upping our game from everything that we do, whether it's fall and Halloween, to what we've been doing with the holidays in December. So we got something really special in regards to that. I also wanted to let you know that our peer refurbishing project has been working really well. We're almost 65% completed and we're moving very smoothly and efficiently with the current crews. Lumber has just arrived, which will be used to finish the center boards and no significant spilling or cracking has been reported. So the expected completion date will be August to September of this year. And that's a multimillion dollar investment in our peer firm, our peer fund. The Griffin Road Landscaping Improvement Project is substantially complete and that was complete by mid-December, delayed by, by a couple of weeks by FDOTs requiring our plant drawing some, some amendments there. So we will be completed there by the end of this week. 37th Terrace Drainage, which is a project that was very much anticipated for drainage, is complete. The 54th Court Drainage Installation of Drainage Structures has been completed and restoration is underway. 43rd Terrace Drainage is scheduled to start Monday, January the 9th. The beach undergrounding, the mobilization has started. Plumbing designs for the new gas lines have been completed and the new permit is being requested. And once that is in place, demolition will begin sometime in the next couple of weeks. Parks and Recreation had a tremendous Christmas break program. We continue to augment our programs and the quality of our programs. And our holiday break camp was really fantastic. I want to give kudos out to Parks and Recreation Team. And the project updates with Bermello and Ahomil that will be presented to staff Friday the 13th. The new design with the amendments for the CW Thomas Park and that will be coming shortly to commission. The demo of the existing playground at Malaluka is scheduled to begin Thursday, January the 5th, which was last week. So we have a new playground coming to Malaluka, followed by the construction of the new playground. The permit, the permitting is almost complete for the construction of Tudy Adler Park. So again, our beachfront park will also have a brand-new park. And both of those parks were monies that we received via our efforts in Tallahassee. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Garcia. Vice Mayor Llewellyn has a question. So does Commissioner James.
Just with regard to the Tallahassee visit, I know the second week is a holiday. There's a holiday that week.
I think there's Presidents, which is a Monday, but we would not be going on a Monday.
Okay, and the, and the week before, I'm just wondering, because we also have a commission meeting the week before. So it would be, it would be after the commission meeting?
Probably be, we would take off on the Wednesday and do like a whole, do the afternoon of the Wednesday and do like a whole day Thursday. You know how that is. You throw away your shoes when you come back.
Yeah, I know, wear comfortable shoes. I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that we were aware of that, so that it's
Absolutely aware.
Planned around it. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner James?
Yes, could you tell me again when, when the CW Thomas Park will be coming back to us?
Yes, so is, is.
Do you have an update?
Is Eric Brown here?
I see him. I just wanted you to call him down. I know he's sick.
Eric, give, give us an update more or less when we anticipate it. I thought it was sometime next month.
Yes, good evening. So this Friday, BNA will be coming back to staff with new drawings, new information, new pricing. And once we're comfortable with it, once we take it to the city manager and we're comfortable with it, we'll bring it to you guys. As we know, the pricing is through the roof. And we had, no, I better not say that, but, well, we, we had champagne taste with a beer budget, even with $18 million for what we were asking for. So after Friday, when we go, when we look at the new plans and the new drawings and the new pricing, I'll meet with the city manager and her team and then we'll bring it back to you guys as soon as possible, I promise.
Does that, does that mean we're going to get beer?
No, no, no.
No. Quality?
I like beer, well, I used to like beer.
Instead of champagne?
Yeah, we, we're going to get champagne.
We champagne up here.
We, we still going to get champagne.
Bring us no champagne plans.
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're going to get champagne. We're going to get champagne.
Even if you got to phase it in one classroom at a time?
Yeah, there you go. So we're getting champagne, and actually we're getting the best champagne, so. It's still going to be, it's still going to be a great bang for our bucks.
Not Bel Air, it was buy one, get one free at Publix.
No, 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 we, we not doing BOGO, we not doing BOGO, so.
If you, if you drink Bel Air?
No, it's going to be great. It's going to be great, guys.
All right, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Director. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
I just wanted clarification about Tallahassee because I just didn't under, I know there are tally days. And so would we be going during the tally days or we wouldn't, it wouldn't work out for us to go during that timeframe?
Well, the legislative session, they have day days, they have Brower days. This is, this is going to be my 25th session. I don't want to age myself, but, but I'm really, I'm very excited about that. But going in day days and going in Brower days, it, it's not the time where you really get the attention of the people that are going to sign on the dotted line to give us what we need, which is money. So when I reached out to Rana, which we've worked very closely with her, you know, I told her, give me the best dates that these individuals that we need to, to meet with on, you know, on, on both sides of the aisles are going to be bright-eyed and bushy-tailed and ready to hear our game plan. So that's why providing these dates.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
My pleasure.
City Attorney Bootsis?
Thank you. I don't have a report tonight, so Happy New Year and be seeing you in the future.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, reminders?
Thank you, Mayor. Upcoming meetings, Thursday, January 12th at 5 o'clock is your CRA Board Workshop, CRA Plan Up. Thank you, Mayor. Upcoming meetings, Thursday, January 12th at 5 o'clock is your CRA Board Workshop, CRA Plan Update. Then Tuesday, January 24th at 7:00 PM is the City Commission Meeting. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned.